Testing, check one, two. Bus check. Bus check, one, two.
Fortunately, we ran the audio to the other submixer.
...
I called them into order. Please rise, salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, ever and ever. This meeting is a compliant public meeting law and has been duly advertised in the newspaper as an official meeting. Roll call.
Mrs. Gardella?
Present.
Mr. McCarron?
Present.
Mrs. Barocas?
Present.
Dr. Osman?
Present.
Mrs. Rivera?
Present.
Mrs. Cass?
Present.
Mr. Palmieri?
Present. I need a motion for approval of the agenda with addendums.
Motion. Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mrs. Gardella?
Yes.
Mr. McCarron?
Yes.
Mrs. Barocas?
Yes.
Dr. Osman?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Palmieri?
Yes. I now turn the meeting over to Ms. Primili for her superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Palmieri. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to start off this evening with... Yes, thank you. Thank you. Oh, am I back? Okay, thank you. Can everyone hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, great. So, I wanted to point out specifically if the board wants to turn around and see that we have finally in district received our two electric garbage trucks. Four years in the making.
That's fantastic. No more waste management?
Yes, no more waste management, correct. So, we were very pleased to see that, and I just wanted to start off with some nice news for all of us. So, as you can imagine, it's a very busy time right now working through the many changes that are occurring in this district. Not a typical summer at all, but I do want to highlight some of the things that are happening for our students this summer. We do have our extended school year program currently running. Our staff are busy working with some of our students this summer to work on strengthening their academic skills and their social-emotional skills. And those classes are happening on a regular basis this summer over at Elm's and Memorial. We also have some of our high school students attending a NJPA Summer 24 Tutoring Program to assist them in strengthening skills to pass the New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment. We were able to use some money for that. And we also have some of our camps that are self-sustaining, running on tuition for childcare. We have our childcare programs. We have some students in that program who are taking some trips and having some fun during the school, during the summer. And some of our other summer camps that are running similar to... We have Digital Media Academy Camp running. In fact, yesterday at Liberty, I saw some students filming. I was a little in their way, had to move out of their way, and they were all engaged in doing some wonderful filming activities. So, it is definitely a busy time for students still and some of our staff members too, as well as our administrative team. We are very busy. In fact, this week is the week that we work with our full administrative team. We come together to review data, set goals, and plan for September. And as you can imagine, there's extra challenges on that this year, but our entire admin team comes together, does brainstorming, and preparing. So, it's been a busy summer thus far. In regards to that information and working with our data that we've been working with the admin team on this week, we do have a presentation tonight. We are required to present our multiple language learners' access scores and also our graduation proficiency scores. So, tonight I'm going to turn this over first to Dr. Godleski, Assistant Superintendent, to share that data with the public and the board. Dr. Godleski?
That was kind of a long walk. Okay, thank you, Ms. Primili. So, this evening I have a number of data points to share with all of you. The first one is the New Jersey GPA results. The New Jersey GPA is a graduation proficiency assessment. It's a requirement of the state that they require that all 11th grade students show proficiency of being graduation-ready. And this test assess whether students are graduation-ready in English Language Arts and Mathematics. Graduation readiness is reported separately on each of these subject areas, and the assessment is actually aligned to 10th grade standards. So, students take the assessment in 11th grade, but it's based on 10th grade standards and content. And Mathematics is aligned to Algebra I and Geometry. Again, courses taken generally in 9th and 10th grade. On May 3rd, the state adopted the proficiency level cut score, so it's 750. And also a menu of alternative assessments and aligned cut scores. So, the goal is students take the NJGPA and pass. In the event that they do not, they can retake parts of it or also meet the requirement through a menu of substitute composite tests, PSAT, SAT, ACT, or AccuPlacer. Or as a last resort, they can also complete and submit a portfolio for review. So, I'll give you a moment to look at this chart. This chart shows the data for graduation-ready students in our district, the state percentage of graduation-ready students, the percentage at Jackson Liberty High School, and Jackson Memorial High School. In looking at this data, you see it's 21, 22, 22, 23, and of course, the current year, 23, 24. I think it's important to note sometimes when we look at data, we look at apples-to-apples, students growing, their 3rd grade test results with their 4th grade proficiency results. These are different groups of children. These are different cohorts. Jackson School District, 77% were graduation-ready for the past year. The state average was 81.6. Jackson Liberty was 76.7, and Jackson Memorial was 78%. And this is in the area of English Language Arts. Okay, the right column shows the performance again from last year to this year. Again, separate cohorts of children, but still important data to consider. Looking at the mathematics outcomes, again, the chart is the same. 51% of our students district-wide were graduation-ready based on this assessment. The state average was 54.7%, Jackson Liberty High School at 36% graduation-ready, and Jackson Memorial High School at 61%. And the change from the previous year is in the right column. It's also important that we take a look at subgroups to see what are subgroups and how they're performing against the all-student average. So, if you take a look at this bar graph, you'll see that all students are compared to Hispanic-Latino subgroup, Asian, African-American, white, economically disadvantaged, special education, and multilingual learners. Subgroups that have an N size or a sample size too small to report, or else it would be self-identifying, are removed from this graph. And this is a reporting of our subgroups for Mathematics for those same subgroups. One of the reasons it's really important to look at this data, to analyze it for subgroups, to really dive deep, is to have a response. It's one thing to collect data, but it's really the goal is to utilize it to ensure that our students show growth and capacity as they work their way through school. So, in a response to this data, some of it which is troubling to us as to increase our number of students who are graduation-ready when they take this assessment, we have some plans set up for Mathematics to improve there, one of which is an implementation of a new Mathematics resources in grades 6 through 12. These resources are rigorous, highly engaging, and differentiated. And differentiated means that children are met where they are, at the standard they can accomplish, and are growing from there. The 6 to 8 resource is called EdGems, and Algebra Geometry and Algebra II for the high school is Savis and Visions. We also are engaging in math-specific professional development, working with two experts in the field, Dr. Milo from Rowan University and Paul Ricamini from Penn State University. We're also engaging in EdGems training, not just getting the new resource, but getting high-quality professional development to ensure that it's implemented with fidelity, as well as PD in Savis and Envision training. Again, to make sure that we don't just have the new resources, but they're implemented the way they're intended to be. We also, as Mrs. Primili pointed out, have begun an NJPA Summer 2024 Tutoring Program that's been going on for the past couple of weeks at Jackson Memorial High School. We have nearly 100 students participating in that by targeting these students and giving them the extra help and targeted assistance they need over the summer to then retest at the end of this program, hopefully to pass the NJGPA. We also have created a course for the fall semester in high school for students in danger of not being deemed graduation-ready, and again, targeting their abilities and providing assistance to show competency in the key areas. We are implementing Lincoln benchmarks for Mathematics. Lincoln is a platform that we use. It's a data warehouse, but it also has its own assessments. And what's great about the Lincoln assessments is that they're all aligned to the New Jersey Student Learning Standards. So, once a teacher has assigned and assessed their student using this benchmark, they then can gather all the data, look at their class as a snapshot, utilize this data to create groups that are differentiated. So, again, meeting students where they are and pulling them into small groups, remediating any gaps in instruction and proficiency. And last, increasing the utilization of Common Lunch for extra help. In responding to our Language Arts data, we also have some steps. We, again, professional development, building the capacity and improving pedagogy is, you know, the part of every teacher's career. We're all lifetime learners, lifelong learners. And meeting the needs of our multilingual learners in the classroom is part of our professional development plan. Increased focus on nonfiction reading in social studies and science classrooms, not just our English teachers. Teach the ELA standards. It's our subject-based teachers as well, especially for nonfiction. The use of data to create a differentiated learning approach. Not all of our students are coming to us with the exact same set of skills, so understanding and working with the students in front of us and giving them what they need is critical to improvement. And the use of iXL. iXL is a differentiated and adaptive platform that provides support when students are missing skills or have gaps in some of their understanding, and it adapts to their level, and it's a great resource for teachers. We've been using it in the elementary and middle grades and now bringing it to the 9th grade to provide a skill-based practice and instruction, and again, to support the teachers by giving them another tool. I already mentioned the NJGPA Summer Program, so that's not just solely for Mathematics. It's for English Language Arts as well, so that's happening. And again, the Lincoln benchmarks that I mentioned in math, standards-based assessment that provide rich data points for teachers to use to tailor instruction and meet the needs of their students. And again, the last, increased utilization of Common Lunch for extra help. Our next steps, the student scores are currently in Genesis, so you can access them through the parent portal if you wish. The detailed student reports will be sent home with seniors in September. Students who did not qualify as graduation-ready will then have opportunities for additional assessments and pathways to fulfilling the graduation requirement. Some of those students are already engaged in one of those pathways in the summer program. I'm going to roll right into our access results. Access is assessing comprehension and communication in English state-to-state. That's what access stands for. And the students that take this test are all of our multilingual learners. MLs were English Language Learners. Last year, they changed the acronym, so just so if you're wondering what MLs are, it's an ELL which replaced ESL. So, understand these are students that do not speak English as their native language and do not have academic proficiency in English. This test is administered kindergarten through grade 12, anyone who's been identified as a multilingual learner. It's given annually to monitor students' progress in learning academic English. Academic English is different than just conversational English. Scores reflect proficiency, the lowest level being Level 1, which is entering, to Level 6, which is reaching. It's anchored in the WIDA English Language Development Standards, and WIDA is from the University of Wisconsin Madison. It's a robust platform that provides proven tools, research-based practices, and support to help educators as well as multilingual learners succeed. This assessment measures the four language domains, listening, speaking, reading, and writing. And educators can use these results along with the WIDA resources from that platform I just described to make decisions about students' English academic language and facilitate this development to be successful in school. Students are tested in four domains, but they'll get one score. It's called a composite score, and that's made up of oral language from the speaking section, literacy from the reading and writing section, and comprehension, which is from the listening section. And as I said, students are rated: entering, emerging, developing, expanding, bridging, and reaching. And while scores can be compared across domains, they shouldn't be compared across grades, because as kids get older and move into higher grades, the content becomes more rigorous. So, you really should only be comparing across domains within a grade. And oral proficiency, just as a reminder, takes three to five years to develop, and academic English proficiency can take four to seven years. So, when you think about the students' time in school, four to seven years is a significant amount of time to get to that English proficiency to do well academically. And I'll give you a moment to take a look at this chart, because this is our access proficiency levels. It's broken down by grade with the WIDA levels, 1 through 6, from entering to reaching, and the bottom row has the number of students tested in that grade. Once students reach a composite score of 4.5, they are exited from being identified as a multilingual learner. So, when you look at this chart and say, "Oh, we should have more in the 6 category. We should have more in the 5 category," understand when students reach that point, they are exited from the program. So, that's why you wouldn't see a lot in those top two categories. And again, data is one piece, but responding to the data and what are we doing to meet the needs of our multilingual learners is an important aspect of analyzing data, and the Jackson School District will continue to respond to the growing number of multilingual learners in our schools. we should have more in the five category, understand when students reach that point, they are exited from the program. So that's why you wouldn't see a lot in those top-two categories. And again, data is one piece, but responding to the data and what are we doing to meet the needs of our multilingual learners is an important aspect of analyzing data. And the Jackson School District will continue to respond to the growing number of multilingual learners in our schools by hiring ESL-endorsed teachers, creating responsive curriculum documents, providing professional development to better understand. The WIDA can-do descriptors. These are descriptors that help teachers understand what language learners can do at the various stages of English language development. Training staff on sheltered English instruction. Again, these are best practices when teaching children to become proficient in English. Maintaining parent liaisons in each building. These are liaisons that can communicate with our families that don't speak English. And growing our parent engagement opportunities, which would strengthen the homeschool connection. That's the end of my presentation. If the board has any questions?
I've got a quick question for you.
Sure.
You said that you'll be better utilizing the Common Lunch. How will you be better utilizing it? Are they going to have some sort of a benchmark? If you didn't do something, you're required to get some help? Like, how are you using that better than we are today?
We actually had our administrative retreat this week, so we met with the principals at the high school. We also had a meeting with a core group of volunteers from the high school before the end of the school year on how we can better utilize that time, how we can ensure that students that are struggling are going in for that extra help, putting in some more accountability measures there. So, and we're also dividing the time, but I don't want to go into too much detail because we need to give the principals time to create their plan and send it out to their staff as well.
Part of the action plan for the multilanguage learners, does that include class size? Is that in consideration as, you know, we're working with these children?
So our children that are identified as multilingual learners, they have a pull-out ESL period, and they're also supported in the class. Does class size have an impact? It does. So they're not placed in smaller classes because they're identified as multilingual learners. Their pull-out period might be smaller, but honestly, that depends on how many students are in need that period.
Can I just ask one follow-up?
Yeah.
I don't think you answered my question.
Okay, go ahead.
You don't have to go into detail.
Okay.
I know that you don't want to do that, but are you basically saying there will be some benchmark, and if a student doesn't meet that benchmark, then there's going to be a requirement that they get extra help during that time?
So the benchmark is how well you're doing in the class. The benchmark wouldn't be our standardized assessments. The teachers are providing extra help in the content that they're teaching, so if students are not doing well in their class, the accountability are that the students must go in for extra help, and that communication will go home to parents, that students need to come in for that time. Did that answer it? Okay, sorry.
So one thing that did stand out to me with the mathematics proficiency.
Yeah.
Memorial showed fifty-seven percent proficient, and Liberty forty-two percent proficient. Now, I see the best practices that are pretty general for both high schools, but what additional resources can we provide Liberty, who seems to be struggling quite a good bit more than Memorial, to help them at the very least catch up to where Memorial is with its proficiency in mathematics?
So Liberty qualified for some targeted assistance funding, title funding, so their plan looks a little bit different than Memorial's plan, who didn't qualify in all the same areas. So some of that includes, I believe, a teacher-leader model in that high school, which we'll be launching. That plan hasn't been totally finalized for next year, but it is differentiated between the high schools based on the needs, and this data point is a pretty significant part of how those needs were measured.
Does that mean that we qualified for additional grant, like, funding for that, which we may not have had prior?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, that is due, I believe, at the end of this month, so you'll have more information at the August meeting about that.
So when the plan is finalized, the board will see this plan and what additional resources are being allocated to Liberty?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? All right, thank you so much. Have a great night.
Thank you, Dr. Gudlefsky. Certainly, we are spending a lot of time addressing how we can continue to improve and strengthen those scores. So tonight, I'm going to change topics. Tonight is the public hearing on the twenty-four, twenty-five proposed budget. As we had said at the tentative budget presentation, this is not a budget we want to present. This is not a budget we agree with, but it is a budget that we need to balance in order to continue to operate pay staff and order supplies and things that this district needs to move forward for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. These are painful cuts, ones that we have tried to avoid through advocating with all decision-makers at the state level about the state aid cuts being so drastic here in Jackson and having great effect on our schools. We've worked so hard over the seven years to avoid affecting our students. We've been creative, we've sought out grants, we've done everything we possibly can, but the twenty-four, twenty-five budget cannot operate and balance without affecting students. We'll continue to advocate, as I know others have, and we appreciate all the advocating and education to our stakeholders about what's happening here, including News Twelve, who came to our meeting last month, spent time here filming us, and then also provided Mr. Palmieri and myself the opportunity to record a question for their Ask the Governor segment the following day. So we did record, and it was shown. And the response from the governor was that he would have the Commissioner of Education reach out to us. And although I did not hear from the Commissioner of Education, Mr. Palmieri did, so I do want to turn it over to Mr. Palmieri to share the information in regards to his conversation with the Commissioner.
Thank you, Ms. Permili. As Ms. Permili mentioned, I had the opportunity to participate in News Twelve's Ask Governor Murphy segment. During this interview, I voiced my concerns about the lack of funding for the Jackson School District and requested the governor restore the much-needed funding. During the News Twelve segment, the governor responded that while he did not have Jackson's data in front of him, he would have the Commissioner of Education, Mr. Damer, contact us. True to his word, the Commissioner called me the next day, and we had a pleasant conversation. I provided him with an overview of the events related to S2 over the past seven years and how they have negatively impacted our district. Although he did not make any commitments, he was understanding, and we agreed to work together. I also extended an invitation for him to visit our district, to which he responded positively, stating that he would take me up on the offer. While the conversation was pleasant, there was no solution to better fund our district. We as a board recognized the need for further action. We are committed to exhausting every resource and pursuing every opportunity for fair funding for our district. And tonight, in executive session, the board authorized our board attorney to take appropriate legal action against the Department of Education in order to obtain funding and/or state aid And/or state aid advance that is required for us to provide an efficient education. We hope this can be avoided, but we do not remain hopeful, given the prior course of events. Thank you, Ms. Permili.
Thank you, Mr. Palmieri. With that, I do need to present the proposed balanced budget to the board, so I'm going So as I just said, this is not a budget that we are by any means excited about, and it is very similar to the tentative budget that was presented at last month's meeting, but it is a requirement that I present it to the board and to the public for comment and discussion. So this evening, I will give an overview of our budget challenges, as I've done in the past. We'll present the proposed budget, discuss the impact, and any changes that have occurred since the tentative budget. We'll have a public hearing on the proposed budget, and the Board of Education will vote on this proposed budget this evening. So those of you who have been following us all along for year after year and in the last few months, this is the slide that represents over the last seven years the reductions that we've had in state aid cuts every year for seven years. The twenty-four, twenty-five was a $4.4 million, but through some legislation, we gained back a few million dollars, which was helpful, of course. But as you can see, just, we have worked in a cut model for seven years. It's very difficult to operate a district for students and provide them everything that we feel that they're entitled to when you're in a cut model every single year with revenue being reduced. We've reduced in every area possible, curriculum, activities, athletics, facilities, improvements have been postponed, and to date now, sadly, we've lost two-hundred-and-forty-two positions across all departments. That's a lot of people to lose. And of course, class sizes continue to grow. You've seen this slide before too, but just again to note the difficulty and the difficulty in what we have had to endure over these seven years. You look at this, if you call it the Biggest Loser chart, and reduction of state aid, you see Jackson in the top ten year after year, one of the very few districts that have been there year after year. Very difficult to manage a district that way. So last month, we showed a little timeline and history of the budget cuts, or the budget, I should say, rather, and the deficit that we've had been dealing with in this twenty-four, twenty-five proposed budget and tentative budget. So the original timeline for a budget, in a tentative budget, is March, which is where we presented the thirty, almost thirty-one million-dollar budget gap that we were facing due to the lack of revenue over the years and expenses continuing to grow. So we did have a thirty-million-dollar gap, and come May seventh, we took some action to reduce that a little bit more and get it down to twenty-six for the proposed budget hearing. And then we had some legislation that was passed in between having to get all of this out, in which restored forty-five percent of the original cuts of the $4.4 million, and so now the cut was a $2.4 million. So that helped us, right? When you look to the right there, the budget deficit, it helped us, and now we had a $24.6 million deficit, still an incredible amount of money to have to close a budget for. And again, as presented last month, we got that down to if we took advantage of or if we implemented the other part of that legislation, which was increasing a one-time increase to the taxpayer to nine-point-nine percent. And we've had conversation about how, although that helps, right, it's not closing the full gap, and I think to do that all in one year to our taxpayers is very difficult. It was, the board did vote that down, and it was overruled, and so we sit at an eighteen-point-one million-dollar gap currently from the tentative budget, so it's still the same. I'm going to talk a little bit more about what just happened in July, but there was a new line item added to the governor's budget for Jackson School Districts before it was finalized, and that was $2.5 million for Jackson. And we'll talk a little bit more about that further in the presentation. What has been happening, this has been, again, the slide that we presented over many presentations we've done, but I think it's important for people who perhaps have not seen everything that we have been doing or have not been in the loop, but we have been advocating, we have worked hard to advocate, you all have worked hard to advocate, our board has, our township, our council, you know, Assemblyman Sewicki, everybody has worked hard, and I am so thankful for the collective efforts to advocate and educate everybody about what's happening here. But again, we have been told that we, in order to operate, need to balance a budget. It's in code, we must balance the budget. If we do not submit a balanced budget for the vote, the district will not be permitted to operate in September. Therefore, that's why I stand here tonight, presenting a proposed balanced budget that has unthinkable cuts in it, as we discussed at last month's meeting. So some of those unthinkable cuts that we do not agree with but are forced to make are inclusive here of closing and preparing, closing Rosenhour and preparing it for sale. And I believe everybody has been informed about that, and it's not something that we want to do, but we need to do in order to move forward in creating a balanced budget. This budget also has an additional seventy positions lost. Although we have been able to have very few people actually lose their jobs due to the number of resignations and retirements that we have received, people moving and transferring into those open positions if they have the appropriate certifications, we've been able to narrow that list down to a very small number of people, still painful for anybody losing their job. But the other piece of this, keep in mind, we're over two-hundred-and-something positions we've left and lost in this district that I just shared with you earlier. The work does not go away. We're saving programs for our students, we're saving things for our students, but the human capacity of this district has been so deflated and limited. Everybody is working above capacity. It's very difficult to operate an organization that way with less and less people, having to do more and more. So again, these cuts were also presented at the tentative budget with a couple of updates to some of the information. One of them being the first bullet there, we talked at the tentative budget about reducing high school athletics and reducing the budget. What we have done here is eliminate some of the assistant coaches' positions that, for some of our sports, where we felt it was, the numbers warranted it, we could still run the program safely with the number of coaches that were available for the, you know, and we were able to save all of our existing sports programs that way. So again, not greatly affecting and reducing programs for students, but rather reducing by staff. But again, what does that do, right? More on the staff that remains. But again, our commitment is to our students, to offer them as much as we possibly can. The other things listed on here, reductions of our department supplies, those budgets have been significantly reduced, some of them by fifty percent. We are reducing our substitutes, and what we mean by that is by reducing the number of permanent building-based substitutes. It doesn't mean that we're not going to have class coverage, it just means that instead of having permanent people in the building every day, we'll be using a daily approach to putting substitutes into the classrooms for, you know, when staff is out. Eliminating, we said last month, eliminating all the late buses, which is heartbreaking because that definitely decreases the amount of opportunities for kids to do things and activities and co-curriculars after school, eliminating the middle school holding center after school, eliminating the after-school enrichment program, reductions of our budget, event staff, our homebound instruction, and cuts to co-curriculars we also mentioned at the tentative budget. And there will not be any significant cuts there. Again, we've tried to be creative and work with what we have, and we are going to be using grant money to pay for three very large clubs at both of our high schools, so that we can keep those clubs and have our kids participating, and rather shifting some grant money into that. Again, it's figuring out what is the best way to use some of our grant money to sustain some of our programs. But that then also, although we're using grant money and shifting there, that takes away something else that we were using in the grant money. But in this case, we felt it was most important to keep those clubs and keep our students engaged in school. So I mentioned that I would be speaking about the $2.5 million that was allotted to Jackson in the governor's budget before it was finally approved. We've also talked about the elimination of courtesy busing in the tentative budget. In order to close, you know, a gap, we really need to look at what are those things that are required to do and not required to do, and actually, the Department of Ed would say that to us as well. So courtesy busing is cut in the budget, but as you heard us say, Mr. Gudinski and I present at the tentative budget hearing, that we are not comfortable with that because it's compromising the safety of our students. We have very dangerous roads here in Jackson, a lot of high-speed roads, without the opportunity for students to walk to them. And there's an example right to the side there in the gray box that demonstrates that. So courtesy busing refers to students who live within a designated distance, for elementary, that's two-point-five miles, and for middle school, that's two miles, being transported. So they live within that, they really technically don't qualify when you look at that, but due to the road... that, but due to the roads, we provide courtesy busing for those students. And so for example, I think Switlick's example here is, if you know Switlick, right next door, can you imagine students walking, who live close to that home, in that mileage, walking those roads and crossing that major street to get to Switlick? So that's an example of what courtesy busing is, for those who have that question. So again, we are not comfortable with that, and so I think that we have been heard. I think we were heard, all of the advocating that was done. I think that our Department of Ed and our legislators understood that as well, and they worked hard in, before the governor's budget was approved, to provide us the opportunity to have an additional $2.5 million. Now, we don't have it yet, and it's not to be included in our budget, but we know that it is coming and will be treated as additional money when it comes in. And it's used, it's slotted for infrastructure money, and we will move things around to pay for infrastructure and fund things so that we can also provide this courtesy busing for the 2425 school year, so everybody can take a breath and say, okay, my kid's going to get to school safe. And that's really important for all of us, I know. But with that, that's a one-year fix. So we need to continually move forward and plan for the following year, and we are currently working with our township about the infrastructure, talking about what we can do, and work together so that for the 2526 school year, we have a year to plan for that, and it's not thrust upon us in this last minute trying to figure it out. So we will continue to work together collaboratively so that we can provide safe, safe travel to and from school for our students. So that's, that's some good news, right? Why is it necessary to close? We've got to celebrate some, some things, right? Thank you. So why is it necessary to sell Rosenhour? We've talked about this the last meeting as well. Because we need to close such a large gap, we need to get a large, millions of dollars of money in revenue to come in to do that. And, you know, the two largest parts in a budget are your, your staff and your facilities. And so rather than looking at reduction of another 200 employees, knowing that we could have some significant amount of money come in through the selling of that school, not that we want to do it, but we did talk about the importance of why we need to do that. Keep in mind, I know, we still have many, many trailers with elementary students in, in them. But we are going to be moving the, the students from, from Rosenhour to another elementary school, and you'll see that in the next slide. So regarding the sale of that property, again, I just want to make sure I'm clear that it is not for sale yet. There is a long process in order to even begin to sell a school building that we're required to go through, which involves getting the Department of Ed approval to sell that, to update our long-range facility plan, and to begin to get an assessment of that school, a value of that school, and then we get to the place where we can start to talk about offering an opportunity for somebody to purchase it. So it takes a lot of steps to get there in order to even start that. But we, again, don't want to have students there and then mid-year have to decide that we're now removing them somewhere else. So the next steps for Rosenhour, all the staff has been notified of their new assignments, and some are going to Crawford Rodriguez School, and some will be assigned to other schools based on the students' needs and the staff certifications, and they have all been informed. All of the K-5 Rosenhour students and families have been also notified that those students will be going to Crawford Rodriguez, all of them. And, you know, I know it's, it's not a pleasant thing to do at all, it's not something we want to do, but at least they're moving all together, the K-5 students, and that they will have a familiar face with Mr. Polikowski as the principal there, as he was the longtime principal at Rosenhour Elementary School. The preschool families are still waiting to be heard from. We want to make sure that we are doing all of this absolutely in the best ways that we can to have the least amount of impact. So those families for the preschool assignments from Rosenhour will be notified really soon, we're hoping, within the week. And then lastly, as we had said last time, we are going to begin planning, getting a committee together to form the opportunity to bring people back to Rosenhour to celebrate their time and honor that significant adorable elementary school. So more to come on that. The next steps for the district, right now, is a public hearing, as we're doing right now, the board voting tonight, and if the board rejects that proposed budget, the county, goes to the county office and the state monitor to step in to ensure a balanced budget is achieved for our district so that we can move forward and begin to, to plan. The county office could approve the plan as proposed tonight, or they can make adjustments to that before Monday, July 22nd, which is the last day for us to approve a budget for the 2425 school year. Remember, all of those timelines shifted much later due to the legislation that was passed in May. We will continue to advocate, as you hear us always say. We will continue to educate, we'll continue to advocate, all decision-makers, because this is not, this isn't just this year. We, we have to keep moving forward, and we have to hopefully get through to people to understand that this can't continue here. We have strong programs for kids, but every year we see that getting less and less. We have to continue advocating and educating. I'm going to turn it to Mr. Boginsky to share the budget information that we presented last time and what the proposed budget numbers are. Mr. Boginsky?
So the proposed numbers are identical to the ones that were presented in the tentative budget. As Ms. Primili said, the $2.5 million that was in the governor's budget, we have not received that yet. We anticipate receiving that at some point here in the next month. When we do, we will receive it and allocate it. So this budget is a balanced budget, which means that the budgeted expenses matches the budgeted revenues, and you're looking here at the revenue side. And so a couple of points to make. One is obviously the general fund tax levy increasing by 9.9%, which was approved at the June board meeting via an override by the fiscal monitor. You'll also see here the state aid loan that we received this year, and that number is zero for 2024, 2025. And then the big difference is the sunsetting of the ARP and ESAR funding, which falls under those federal and state programs. So you see where in '23, '24, we had $17.3 million allocated for that in revenue, and that drops down to $13.1 million. So with that funding sunsetting, that created an even bigger challenge for us this year that we've talked about at past presentations. So the overall impact to the taxpayer on the next slide is the same one that we had presented last time. This is on the averaged home assessed, assessed home in Jackson, which is $330,688. This would be a $146 increase for one year for the average homeowner. And this is considering and including the impact of the 9.9% increase to the tax levy.
Thank you, Mr. Boginsky. So in closing, obviously, we've said this last time, and I think this absolutely is how we have always operated here. It's been difficult times for seven years, and we work hard together, we pull together to protect our students' experiences and education, as we say from time to time. They're our number one priority, they always remain the number one priority, and it's difficult times, but we can get through it together by working together. And I thank you all for all of the hard work that everybody in this community, our board, and like I said before, you know, everybody in the community, our township, our staff, everybody working hard together to, to get through these difficult times. We have to, we have to stay connected and, and work on this together. So with that, I ask the board if there are any questions.
I have a question. In this slide where you said that obviously the sale of Rosenhour isn't happening at the moment, and there's a process in place that the New Jersey Department of Education is a part of. What are some of the things we're going to anticipate? Like, are they going to look at the fact that we have children in trailers and other buildings? Could they say that we have to use that revenue for specific items and what we anticipated to use them for? Like, what are some of the things that we, obviously, we don't have the crystal ball or the answer, and I understand that, but that maybe from your experience or what you're preparing yourself for?
So we need to submit a letter of approval to close the school to the Department of Education. And in that letter, we are commenting that we still have students in trailers. So they will be informed. The county is obviously very much in the loop, the county business administrator. Mr. Boginsky, do you want to comment a little bit about that visit that we had?
Sure. So all of the temporary construction, construction units, which are the trailers, are approved on an annual basis by the county office. That's a largely a paper process. I mean, our trailers, by and large, are from 1998. So this has been a temporary construction unit that has been approved on a, on a annual basis for over 20 years. She actually came out and visited and wanted to see the trailers herself, because we shouldn't be approving temporary construction units for that long of time without a definitive plan to not continue to have students in them. So, so I think it was a positive that she came out and wanted to see them herself, but it doesn't mean that we, we can't stop using them. We, we need them right now in terms of capacity.
I guess what I'm asking is like, is there a chance that they're going to say, hey, your revenue from the sale of Rosenhour needs to be utilized for X, Y, and Z, and not necessarily what you budgeted for? Or once we say that's what it's budgeted for, those revenues will be budgeted for the programs, the support staff, the positions, et cetera?
I don't have an answer to that, I don't know, but if I were to, you know, provide a guess, I would say that I don't see them telling us how we should be spending that money. I think it's more about that we have a balanced budget. But again, we do have oversight, right, from the Department of Ed in our district right now, so there can be those types of conversations that have, can occur. I will say with the, the sale of Rosenhour, keep in mind, as I said, it's a, it's a lengthy process to even get to the point where it's up for sale. There's a strong chance that we may not even have any revenue for the 2425 budget to put into that, that budget. So we, we could run into the red if we don't sell it in time to close this year's budget out.
Do you feel that the Department of Education will give us, you know, our administrative team enough time to determine what the next steps are, knowing we're going to go into a '25, '26 school year with a deficit, to make changes in our district and not be so hasty? You know what I'm saying? Like, do you feel that they're, they're going to make us, you know how we waited a long time, and at each board meeting you discuss the 20, I'm going to get myself confused, '23, '24 school year, like, before we could even talk about this school year we're headed into? So no, we're not like planning for anything that we know is going to come. Do you think that would be a little more quickly, quick this time? Or maybe that's a question, you know, different, for a different person, or?
So I'll, I'll start by saying, all I can speak to is the experience we just went through. And the experience that we went through for the '23, '24 budget was having to provide the monthly cash flow updates to, to the Department of Ed so they could monitor where we were with our budget and when we might anticipate going into a deficit. And we needed to provide a lot of backup, backup data to some of those things. I think that we're at a place now where that's on a routine basis. I would imagine that's still going to be a requirement for us to do. We just did submit another cash flow document to them. So I would anticipate that would probably be the same process. I don't know what, I can't speak anymore to that. I don't know what it would be for the following year, if it's going to be just as intense or not intense. I think it's going to be dependent on, on them.
Ms. Primili, prior to the state monitor, our county superintendent, and the Department of Education even approving this budget with the sale of Rosenhour, was it discussed before it went on the budget that this is a short-sighted fix? That this is a one-time revenue boost? That the next year, we will not have a Rosenhour to sell, and we'll still need to come up with that additional revenue? We still have 26 trailers full of students, so does the short term outweigh the long term? Was that discussed with our, our state monitor and with the county and the Department of Education?
Yes, I can say that we, in conversations and in meetings, have made that clear to Ms. Morris and to our county business administrator as well. And I most recently met with the new county interim superintendent and explained that to her as well.
And they were all still in agreeance that this school should go up for sale for the sale of a one-time revenue?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So most of the items and how they're being cut or trying to bring money in, they're all short-term, they're all short-term fixes, they're all Band-Aids. There's nothing that's really going to sustain for the long term, you know, long term. So the state, and we heard this on your conversation with Channel 12's questions to the governor, we heard this where he said, well, some schools should be, some districts should be closing schools and for various reasons, right? Like, they need to look at their budgets and do away with things. But is the state giving any guidance to administration on how to look at it long-term? Because there is nothing here that is going to help you in the future. You're going to be right back where we are, moving forward. Everything that was presented is a Band-Aid. So how is the state communicating? What do they want schools to do ultimately? Or is that a question for Ms. Morris?
I, you know, I, I can't speak to what the state is, is, you know, thinking that we should do, other than I've, you know, have been communicated with that I need to close the budget gap. I have articulated, since I started this position, that these are all one-time fixes. The $2.5 million that we just got, we are appreciative of it, 100% appreciative of it. We are so pleased that we can restore courtesy busing for our students, but again, it's a one-time fix. So the district itself needs to, and I've spoken to the board a little bit about this and my admin team this week, we need to enter into some strategic, major strategic planning to really look at how we need to be able to really use all the resources we have to the most efficiency we can to create every opportunity to sustain our district, knowing that there are no other major revenue sources coming our way. I will say that what has been told to us in many conversations is the district can go out to the voter for a special question to bring in more revenue. So, you know, that's what we've been told, and we all know what that means, right? That's the only, only mechanism we have right now, are special questions to bring in, bring in more revenue that way, and, or through our tax levy. And right now, that will go back to a 2% cap for the following year. So I'm not saying I agree with these things, I'm just saying this is what has been told to us.
Right, and as a follow-up to that, it's the 2% is the max that you're allowed to do, otherwise it has to go out to a special question. Is, is there a cap on, I mean, how much does the state want the taxpayer? How many special questions are you going to have? Like, it doesn't seem sustainable at all.
I disagree.
I'm, I'm happy to hear that we're using some of that $2.5 million for, to restore courtesy busing. I think that's very important. But the late busing, we're not restoring the late busing with the courtesy because a lot of after-school students stay for sports or extracurricular and parents work, and that's their only way home. Are we able to also restore the late busing with the courtesy busing with that $2.5 million?
So at this moment, no. I, we need to take a deeper look and see what it can cover. I will say, as I've said always to the board and the community, we don't stop. Just because this budget is, is hit and we've cut some things, we're always creative and looking at other ways that we can fund things. So we are looking at the late bus issue right now and brainstorming and looking at other sources of revenue, specifically grant money, to see if we can fund some of it that way.
Can I ask Ms. Morris a question? Where, where do we go from here? Where do you see, how do you get our district out of not having proper funding? How, you vetoed everything we did last meeting, so what's your plan for our budgets moving forward? You're the one that has the say.
Well, as you know, a monitor, myself, was not appointed to your district until January. So what I have spent with the administration these few months on is really getting to see a complete and have a complete review of the district itself. I'm assigned here for anyone that doesn't know, because when a district in New Jersey applies for a, an advance on state aid, otherwise known as a loan, the law requires that that state be assigned a monitor. So that's basically the reason for coming. Legislation is obviously the only way, there are only two ways that I can see out for the district. way, there are only two ways that I can see out for the district and I've talked, we've talked about, all of us, in administrative meetings. One would be legislation that would be dedicated to a district like Jackson that obviously had problems as a result of the funding that has existed up to this point. The other is a tax increase. Now, nobody, no matter where you are, I realize, wants a tax increase. But what's happened is that in the state of New Jersey, there is, and again, this is for anyone that may not know, a term that's used, referred to often in budgeting as the district's fair share. What that means basically is that there has been a formula imposed to determine how much taxpayer money is available or should be available to finance and support the schools. Jackson is under its fair share, close to, I think it's 20 million, 24 million. Dan, you have a more accurate figure on this, but I think the last time we looked at it, it was about 24 million, but that's without this new tax increase. So, that's probably going to be a real possibility. However, going back to what was said, in order to do that right now under the law and the way the state laws are written, you have to go to a public question. That can't be something, you know, a board of education operates very differently than a municipal government. A municipal government, if it needs to raise funds, it can bond. And that bond decision can be simply a vote of the board at a meeting. In the school area of funding, everything has to go to the voter in the form of a resolution or a referendum. So, having a special tax question to support, for instance, you're talking about the fact that these are one-year fixes. If, for example, the question of courtesy busing comes up again next year, that may have to go out as an individual question. And people who want it and want to see that it continued in the district will just have to support it. There are only so many ways that any district, not just Jackson, but any district can bring money into the revenue side of the budget. This, I said this from the beginning when I got here, this is obviously not a spending issue as much as it is certainly a revenue issue. And that makes it extremely difficult. If I had the absolute answer to your question in the form of a plan, I would be very glad to share it with you. But we've been working hard to look at every aspect to try to see, and it may require that the district, you know, goes to the Department of Education in a formal way and says, you know, this is what we need to continue to operate. Because it's, right now, at a critical situation. And not because there has been any misspending or anything like that. It's on the revenue side. There's just not the revenue coming in that it, that should be, either through the funding that's been imposed nor the fair share amount of taxes that have been paid.
We kind of have gone, by taking a loan, and went to the Department of Education saying, we need money. And it's gone on deaf ears. And here we are, so we're becoming a, people have to pay to send their kids to public schools here. We're going to raise the taxes and keep raising the taxes. It's not fair for the residents here in Jackson who maybe can't afford to do that.
Well, let me just say, it hasn't fallen on deaf ears. You did get a loan for 23-24 when you said you needed it. The administration went through a lot of support information, but the district did hear you and they did give you the $7 million that was needed to, you know, finish out the 23-24 school year without going into deficit. Now, whether or not that's something that's going to have to be done again this year or not, I don't know. But that certainly is open, as always, as an option and along with the individual question to the voters. So, and let me say one other thing. The fact that your board president had a discussion with the commissioner directly on the phone, the fact that, you know, as recently as yesterday, I talked quite a long time with two assistant commissioners in the Finance Department in Trenton. It's not going on deaf ears. The problem is trying to find the right solution that is both legal and appropriate to try and get Jackson out of this hole.
Would it be appropriate, Ms. Morris, for some of the ideas to be where a district like Jackson, where maybe we're, we see that we're always going to be in this kind of cut deficit model because of revenue, right? And to increase to the amounts that we're at is pretty, you know, it's intimidating. Could an idea of having the length of our budget set for multiple years, you know what I'm saying, so that we can then work on cutting that way? I don't know if I'm making sense, but, you know, basically how I see it is we're, we have this budget, we're going to head into a school year, we're going to start a new budget, there's going to be funding that comes to us, we're going to have to think about a special question. We never get to really think about, you know, ways that we could best utilize all of our facilities and for our students. And it would be nice if the timeframe for the budget was more than 12 months.
Right now, legally, that is the timeframe. It's a suggestion, certainly. Let me also add to that, that I know that your superintendent has every intention of addressing, I hope I'm not speaking out of line here, a strategic plan that will address more than one year of looking at your district. I know she's already started to work on that. That's certainly what's needed. There are a number of things that have to be done along with that. A new demographic study is certainly a possibility that has to be done by the district. There are a number of things, all these things take, unfortunately, take time. But your suggestion is a good one. I don't think you could just look at a one-year from year to year anymore. You're going to have to have a broad plan that covers a number of years so that you know where you're going. And I know your superintendent already has suggested that.
Ms. Morris, can I just ask you, even if you look years in advance, you're looking at data, right? You had, this is what your district should be getting, right? You said in your presentations, we get a grid that shows what we should be getting versus what we are getting, and we can see very clearly how we're not getting what we should be getting. So if you're making a multi-year plan, don't you need transparent data? Because if we're using the data that we're getting from the governor's office and then it's totally off by millions and millions of dollars, how do you make a plan, ever? If it's a short-term, one year, two years, three years? Because it's not transparent.
I don't know what you mean by not transparent. I mean...
If I could just go, explain the grid.
So, Dr. Osborne's talking about the adequacy budget and how we're $24 million below adequate adequacy. And when we get the state aid numbers, like our transportation aid, which should be 7.2 million, and it's only $660,000, and it's only been that for the same seven years, that's the gap she's talking about. And yet, we have no mechanism to go and seek to close the gap without, as Ms. Primili said, putting a special question out. There's no revenue opportunity for us to close that gap.
How do you budget?
I know that it's extremely difficult. You're dealing with a formula that comes directly from the Department of Education and is approved, you know, year to year. And I think that's another issue. Their budget is approved year to year. And the department and the state itself isn't, is not budgeting with numbers, giving them out to districts for more than one year. So, you know, I don't have the ability myself to change that. The only thing I can do as the monitor here is communicate that as being one of the problems to the powers that be that have to take a look at this. You know, there is nobody, I can tell you this much, because I would not be a part of it. There is nobody sitting in the Department of Education that wants to see these problems in Jackson or any other school. I mean, that's not, that's not what they're there for. But, so, when you, if you just accept that, I'm not here as an enemy. I am here and can be of great help to the district if there's a way of me being able to communicate your needs to, you know, to the people that need to hear it, as opposed to not having somebody at all doing that. So, in that respect, not because it's me personally, but having a monitor is a good thing here in being able to understand your problems and communicate them to the people that need to hear them. And that's one of the things that I have been attempting to do. That's all I can say about it. If I could change a formula, I would, but not even, the legislature, I don't think has even done that. I know the sunsetting of S2 is this year, I believe, or next coming here. And something is going to have to replace that, I would assume. So that's the time, maybe some of these things can be corrected.
I'd just like to comment on that for a second, Ms. Morris. So, I was at a meeting where I did hear some word through the commissioner's office that they do recognize that there have been some school districts and some, yeah, some school districts that have been affected greatly and that they are, they do have a committee that they've put together that will be reviewing the formula and looking to make some, not great overhauls to the formula, but to make some tweaks to the places in the formula that make sense so that some of these districts, the S2 districts that have, like Jackson, who have been significantly hurt by this, perhaps will not be in the future. So that was promising to hear, but again, you know, I've been through this for seven years, there's no promise there and there's no indication of it being fixed. But at least it was nice to hear that there was some recognition to the fact that there were some places that perhaps this was not the best formula for that district, or some things need to change slightly for that district. As I've said from the onset, the differentiation, you know, to have every single district, you know, go through the formula with whatever that may be, and not necessarily understand some of the uniqueness to some of the districts. And I have presented from the onset of this, since I've started as a superintendent, there's unique circumstances in Jackson that I don't think were considered in that formula. And I would also like to say that I do believe that things that I have said to Ms. Morris have been communicated to the Department of Ed through her.
So I guess just to sum it up for everybody, because we had a lot of discussion, how I see it, the Department of Education has reduced our state aid by about $23 million. The Department of Education then sends out a report, an adequacy report, that says, hey, Jackson, you're $23 million underfunded. Ms. Morris has said several times, and I appreciate this, that we do not have a spending problem. We have a revenue problem. We have a revenue problem that's essentially caused by the state of New Jersey. And then, Ms. Morris did just say that Jackson has to find a legal way out of this hole. Well, the state put us in this hole legally. And then fourth, I heard, Jackson has to pay its fair share. Well, we pay over $68 million in income tax. That money's supposed to be repurposed to the school district. We're only getting $23 million of that. The other $45 million is being repurposed to other districts. So we are paying our fair share. So to tell us to raise our taxes 9.9% and even more the following year to pay our fair share when we're already paying it is absurd. And that's Trenton government. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. I turn it back to you, Mr. Palmieri.
Thank you. All right. I need a motion to open public forum on the 2024-2025 budget only.
Motion.
This public forum will be for questions on the budget only. I heard a motion. Please sign in and state your name and whether or not you are a Jackson resident. Each person is allowed a maximum of five minutes to speak. No person may speak more than once on the topic until all others have been heard.
We good? John Spaltoff, Two Ruby Court. I am a Jackson resident and proud parent of three kids who have spent the last 17 years in these great schools. We did fly right under the radar last year. My girls got their license just in time to not lose out on transportation to swim. With that said, the girl's swim team barely could compete because of so many kids that could not make it to the practices at the Ocean County. Why? Because there was no bus. And we broke the law and allowed her to drive extra friends in the car to get there. When we're communicating what the issue is, we do have a spending problem, and we don't talk about it enough because it's an uncomfortable talk. But if we look at line 11-000270-503, aid and lieu payments, 2021, 1.3 million. 2122, 2.6 million. 2223, 2.2 million, that seems odd to me, but 2324, 4.4 million. Projected for 2425, $6.5 million. That's what needs to be communicated to Trenton. We are in a unique situation. This is a unique situation. Us and many of our surrounding towns that are in the same spot. It's not anybody's fault. It's the way the law is set up. The new number, $1,177 for aid and lieu payments. For those of you that aren't aware, that's for non-public students to get busing. What are we doing, what are our costs for non-public out-of-district special education? These are the things that need to be communicated to Trenton that are not typical of Manalapan, where I spent many years. But this is some, that's what we have to talk about. $4 million or $6.5 million that we're spending to bus when we're sitting here talking about taking away after-school busing for our public school students. It's great that you can save that two and a half, that you got that two and a half million and you can do the busing. The infrastructure is never going to be in place next year to do the sidewalks and do all that other stuff. We're going to be having this conversation again next year. The change for Jackson needs to come, thank you for being here, Assemblyman, it needs to come at Trenton and it needs to come with these towns that have a high number of non-public students. No offense to the non-public students. They're entitled to what they're entitled to. But you tell me that $6.5 million on that presentation right now wouldn't have helped a whole bunch, right? You look at our bilingual salaries, talk about, we definitely have to do a demographic study. Our demographics have changed. Our bilingual salaries from 2021, where they were $3.90, are now almost $1 million, right? It's changed. We've watched it change. It's great. It's wonderful. It's provided diversity and everything in our district that we didn't have before. But it's a cost. That is an expense. That is a spending issue. That is not a revenue issue. We need the revenue to fix that expense. We need the revenue to fix the non-public transportation piece. We do have a spending issue. It's what we're spending money on that we're required to spend money on that we have zero control over. So hopefully, that's been the conversation, and that's what needs to change for us and all of our other towns that are threatening lawsuits. We're all in the same boat right now. I think that's all I had. Thank you. Thank you for your hard work. We appreciate it.
This is also comments about the budget, yeah? Just thumbs up real quick? Okay, good, because you just said comments, but questions anyways. One, so I'm back again, Jackson resident, Isaac Elsner. One statement really popped out for me from Ms. Morris is that we are getting our fair share. No, we are not. If that was the case, they wouldn't be wearing shirts saying that the funding formula failed Jackson. Have you even listened to us the past couple of months? We've basically been telling you that we're doing fine. It's just that the state's cutting the funding by so much. We... We literally can't operate without that funding. And with the closure of Rosenhour, the sale might not even be done during the school year. We might we might still be in the red. There might be that gaping hole where the funding just doesn't exist, even though that it was, you know, approved because the school's basically being sold. That's that's a hole even afterwards. What what's going to happen if the state with this new formula that could be coming, S two, the sequel maybe? What exactly was going to happen then? We might still be in a hole because it might be minor tweaks, just a minor patch update, as the steam users would say. What happens if it's still going to cut our funding each year going forward for the next who knows how long? What will we have to keep closing schools? Because that's not a viable option. At what point do we just overcrowd these schools past the legal limit and OSHA just says, hey, sucks, but you can't have these students going to your schools anymore? We know you're cutting because, you know, the funding is gone, but there's just a limit to how many students can cram into one school. If if we're going to be forced to be cutting stuff, like, who knows what school could be cut next if we keep losing money? There literally will be no space for these students to go because we're already losing Rosenhour. And hey, what if in the future we get our funding back and we need more space? We'd just have to build a completely new school because we were forced to cut one because the state is incompetent and we just can't get funding. It's entirely a ridiculous situation. I should not be here fighting for the district because of something the state is it's it's out of their control. And of course, it's a revenue issue, but how is a school supposed to make revenue? The job is literally a public service. You're teaching the future. Without the school, there is literally no future. It's ridiculous. In short, it'll probably come up later, depending on how this vote goes. Please just listen to them. This budget could cripple them for the next 10 years or even more. It's it's just really bad. If 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 you basically just let this budget pass essentially, it could be a death spiral.
Deb Jones, Jackson. Apparently, I'm his cleanup crew because here we are again. So and again, I'm glad you're here fighting for the town. My first couple of comments are to Ms. Morris. First, I do have respect for your job and what you're here to do, but it's still it hurts to know that we're even in the position where we need you, and that's not personal. But we only need the advance in the state aid, the loan, because of the horrendous cuts that the state has forced on our district. So that's a little sad that we have to endure that. And, you know, maybe the state can help us get out of this hole by giving us the funding that we deserve, that we put in as taxpayers, which has been said many times. But, you know, I don't think our governor right now is taking our kids and our taxpayers as a priority. And unfortunately, you're the face that represents him right now. And I do think that that's sad, and I really I do feel bad for you. As far as our school district, our Board of Ed, our administrators, the first thing I'd like to say is thank you for making our students a priority. The government isn't, but you are. And the fact that so much work went into putting all of our Rosenhour kids under one building, under one roof, speaks volumes to me. Our kids are a family, and now they will be part of a larger family, but they will all still be together and have that confidence and with most of the staff that they're so used to. I just, I don't know where we go from here. Like he said, this year it's Rosenhour. What happens next year? We're in the same situation. We only have so many schools. Our our kids coming in, yet Rosenhour might have had less student population, but all of our other schools are busting at the seams, and now they're going to be busting more by adding them. What do we do then? We have six. Now we have five elementary schools going into two middle schools, two middle schools going into two high schools. We have nowhere else to cut. Something has to be done. And I get that you're the voice of our town right now. I'm asking you to, with every bit of desperation I have, throw yourself on them to tell Murphy that we need the help that we deserve. We pay into it. We're not asking for anything that we shouldn't be getting. I am a little sick at the idea that we even have to go for a loan or funding when we've already paid into it. The taxpayers in this town work very hard. It's very hard to swallow a pill of our taxes are going to go up for our school district. Do I know they have to? Yes. But again, I'm going to say, I'm going to be worked out of this town just because I simply won't be able to afford to live in it anymore, and that's not fair. Thank you for all that you do.
John Myers. I was I was here a couple of meetings ago, and I was talking about suing the state, so I'm glad something's moving forward on that. But I looked up a little bit of history on that. So this is kind of like the Abbott School District, right? We're going to be suing to become one of them or whatever, get our fair share and whatnot. But I looked up the timeline of that. That Abbott School stuff started in the 1980s. It didn't get ratified until 1995 or something like that. So we're talking about 15 years of arguing to get, you know, certain districts a lot more money than they should. What kind of timeline are we looking at? I mean, is this something that's going to take a decade to actually have something realistically done to the district? I don't know if that's directed to the lawyers or whatever, but.
Have you finish your comment. We'll we'll answer at the end for you. So you have the whole you can absorb your whole five minutes if you.
Okay. My other question, this would be towards the superintendent. So we talked about we're losing the after-school busing and whatever else, but what other direct impacts are we talking about to our classes? More specifically, like class sizes and stuff, now that we're losing all this money on this budget that we all know is not realistic? You know, our my my daughter's teacher is in the back already, and we had, you know, 25 something kids to a class. And I know on one of the last slides, we're talking about 30, 40 kids to a class. How is that possible? And is that really is that realistically something that's going to happen? Or is that just like a nice talking point that gets people riled up? But is it realistic or not? Because if we're really talking about 40 kids to a classroom, I don't even know why we're here. You know, I know I used to be in government on one of the committees and whatnot, and I know there's like protocols on things that you have to do. But at the same time, if we know something isn't right, then why are we doing it? You know, I I'm sick and tired of hearing this bomber or whoever, you know, saying, well, this is the process. This is the process. We have to do this. We have to do that. That's BS. You know, if the process is wrong, don't do it. And I'm not going to say I'm going to blame anyone this, but the extreme example of Hitler and all that, right? When people were going around killing people and you knew it wasn't right, somebody should have done something. And that's kind of the same case here, obviously, to less of an extreme. If we know it's not right, don't do it. If if it's we have to vote on this, even though if we don't like it, we have to vote on it, then don't vote on it. Simple as that. I'm going to bet you in government, when it comes down to it, there's probably something that says, you know, if they vote no, well, she can overrule you. Well, what happens if you don't vote? That's going to throw the red flags. It's going to pull the the thing out. Nobody's going to know what to do at that point. And then, you know, same thing, too. It's just, it's ridiculous. It it shouldn't be, we shouldn't be voting on it, and it should just be basically shut down as it was because it's just it's not it's not possible. I don't even know why we're here arguing about this. That's what I got to say. Thank you.
We will answer questions at the end. We'll have everyone speak, and then we'll get back to any, you know, question.
Hello, my name is Julian Mignone. I'm 19 years old. I graduated in 2023. I first came across S two and how drastic it was in this situation to our district in March. I was writing a paper in college about it. It's just ridiculous that we're looking for a solution. There's no solution because there's no metric. There's no answer to where money's coming from, where money's going. We just got $2.5 million out of nowhere from the state, so they can just pick and choose when we can get our money and when we can't. I think we're looking at S two changing next year. No one knows what's going to happen. Maybe we'll get the money that we need. Maybe we'll get less. Like, who who actually knows the answer? But raising taxes, the 9.9%, it it makes no sense. We put up a special question last fall. It got rejected. Let's raise to the $4 million. Where's that $4 million going to go? It's going to go nowhere because we can't even close a budget that is $30 million. So we're just going to burn money because that money is not going to generate enough to fix the problems. Let's add 20 staff positions. That was on the special question. Well, it got rejected, and now look how many teachers and staff is getting cut, 70 positions. So what was the point of that anyway? Because it wasn't going to help us right now. And now we're going to put up a new one. We're going to put up the 9.9%. And it's only a temper it's it's not going to fix the situation. Raising taxes is not going to fix it. We need we need the government. The board's here. We need to keep fighting. We need to make a statement. I think it's great that we can come out and voice our opinion, and our opinion needs to be heard. I I had class in a trailer. These I just learned today, these trailers are from 1998. We're going to close Rosenhour because now let's just cram more students into a classroom. It makes no sense at all. And Ms. Morris, I I understand your job here. You're here because we needed a loan to help fix the previous school year, and we're going to be in the same boat now. We're going to be in the same boat next year. I just say, listen to our board and make the decision. I don't know what the consequences if you follow the board's decision. I don't know what your boss will say to that, but I think if you follow your heart, you follow what the people this town represents. What we need in Jackson is help right now from the state. I think if you follow what we need, we're begging for help, I think we could be heard, and I think the state can maybe help us. That's all I have to say. I I really hope that this situation turns around because it's it's just, it's it's like, I can't believe this is reality in this situation here in Jackson. You know, the whole Ocean County seems like many schools are facing this problem, and we all need to work together. All the schools need to come together that are struggling, and we need to fix this.
Good evening. I would like to read my statement into the public record, so I don't want to miss what I want to say and what I want to share. It is very disheartening what we all had to hear about the situation going on with our Jackson schools tonight. My name is Nino Barelli. I'm honored to serve our fellow residents as their councilman on the Jackson Township Council. The mayor and council supports the hard-working efforts of all of you on the Board of Education and our superintendent, Permili, and Jackson's ownest element, Alex Sawicki. We support parental rights. As an elected official in Jackson, a concerned resident and a grandparent of two children in the Jackson Township Public Schools, I'm asking the state of New Jersey to advocate for Jackson students and taxpayers. With everybody paying almost more for everything, Jackson residents cannot afford to pay for a huge increase of taxes because of a problem the state created and because they are not adequately providing aid to our public schools. As been said, we don't have a spending problem in Jackson. We have a revenue problem because of the state. The district has lost, as we've heard, $22.4 million in state aid over the past seven years. And they already made many cuts, as we've seen. It was presented here tonight, and are unable to maintain our school buildings. The subject matters kids learn today from their teachers and coaches on the sports teams they play on stay with them for a lifetime. They need them. The governor, Murphy, and Democrat-controlled state legislature and state Board of Education, our kids' education should be a bipartisan issue and priority. Stop defunding our schools in Jackson. Fairly inequitably, return state aid to our towns' public schools. As we heard from Board of Ed Education President Giuseppe Palmieri say, we pay more into Trenton than what we get back. The school funding formula really needs to change. The 2025 elections can't come soon enough. Thank you for your time, everybody, for your public service and for advocating for every child in our town and their safety and well-being. Have a good evening.
Hi, Eleanor Hanum. I'm a public school teacher, special education teacher in Middlesex County. I'm a lifelong resident of Jackson Township, an alum of Memorial. All my children went here. I have three grandchildren at Johnson currently. My mother was a teacher at Rosenhour. It is unfathomable to me that we would consider or being forced by the state to sell a school when we are educating our children in 26 trailers. At the same time, this state has not taken into consideration the transportation of the busing in a 100-square-mile township. It takes over 20 minutes to get from one border to the other border. I know this because I lived out that way. So that gas, that time, all of that is taken into consideration. Another thing that has not been taken into consideration is the fact that Jackson Township over the past few years has approved probably 3,000 housing units. So we're going to sell a school and bring in thousands of more children over the next five years. Where are we educating them? Where are we going to educate? We're going to put in more trailers? And we talk about the social, emotional well-being of our children. Where I teach, these kids do have courtesy busing. They do have after-school busing. And some of my students, because I'm a high school teacher, they'll walk home if they they miss it. And I'll ask them, is it a long walk? They benefit because they do not live, I mean, because they do live in close proximity to the high school. Jackson Township is 100 square miles. So now you are taking these children, many of which that are suffering from mental illnesses these days, and their outlet are their sports. Now you take away the after-school ability, and you are now creating a larger problem. These kids, for their mental well-being, need these outlets, especially if you look at the society today, what is happening.
Board, Ms. Palmieri, I'll be very brief. I'm basically exceptionally concerned about the increase in taxes. I think that's that's utterly absurd. The board voted against it. Ms. Morris somehow overturned it. That's grossly beyond her authority. There there's nothing in the statute that possibly permits her to do that. I urge this board to reject this budget, and I wish you the best of luck in the suit against the state.
I'm sorry. So can you just state your name for public record? Your name?
Robert Baroska. And I am a Jackson resident.
Are there any additional questions or comments on the budget only? So you know, come forward. I need a motion to close public forum.
Motion.
All in favor? At this time, we're going to review our standing committee's report. Oh, I'm sorry. Let me, yes. We have a couple of respond responding we would like to do. Ms. Permili, would you like to touch on the class, I guess, sizes and some things?
Thank you. I'll start with the class sizes. So we we obviously are seeing continued increase in class sizes. Right now, I'm estimating for our class sizes at the elementary level to be anywhere from 25 at at the lower end and 27 at the high end. We work, we try really hard to keep our youngest grades to lowest numbers possible, but we will see some class sizes of 25 to 27 at the elementary level. At the middle school level, we'll see class sizes between 28 and 30, 30 plus, you know, maybe 32. And then on an average at the high school, you're looking at definitely 30 to 35 students. And again, I'm just going to repeat what I believe everybody understands already, what research shows and demonstrates is smaller class sizes, better achievement, and better connections for kids. These are high numbers. I'm going to ask the board attorney to address the timeline of this, the lawsuit.
Sure.
Sure. So, the gentleman who spoke earlier is absolutely correct that litigation is a long and arduous process. I think you're right. The Abbott-Berk litigation probably took 10, 15, 20 years. The good news is that there is a process in the law by which a petitioner or a plaintiff can seek what's called emergent relief. And that's where you're getting into court or before an administrative law judge on a very expedited basis to get the relief that you're seeking. Of course, certain very stringent criteria have to be satisfied, but we wouldn't take this litigation down the slow road. We would proceed on an emergent basis. And I don't want to divulge too much more about our legal strategy, but we're very mindful of the concerns that you raised.
Thank you. Standing committees, we have buildings and grounds. Chairperson, Mr. McCarron, please report.
Yes, some capital improvement projects district-wide. Elms Room 225, new HVAC compressor was installed. Liberty C121, new HVAC compressor was installed. Getz generator repaired that operates lift station during power outages. Liberty, the heat exchanger replaced for the auxiliary gym. Memorial Clayton C-Wing preschool project is in process. Getz Gymnasium floor, they resurfaced the entire floor, repair and paint all new graphics. Memorial Transportation, the paving project was completed. And RTK DOH inspections, Rulo and Julet Associates has updated our district-wide SDS files with the DEP and we're in compliance.
Thank you, Mr. McCarron. We now have transportation. Chairperson, Ms. Barokas.
Transportation Committee did meet, as Ms. Promili had mentioned. Obviously, you can see courtesy busing will be returning. And also, we're meeting, we are working with the, I'm sorry? Oh, sure, no problem. My husband says that, too. So, we did meet with the township and the transportation board. As you can see, Ms. Promili had mentioned that courtesy busing will be returning with the funds that we received from the state. And we are also working with the township moving forward for the 2025-26 school year to look at the infrastructure, the roads in the townships to see what we would look at moving forward. And we met, like I said, the committee and also with our township representatives.
Thank you, Ms. Barokas. We will now, I need a motion for approval of policy, second reading.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Ms. Gardella?
Yes.
Mr. McCarron?
Yes.
Mrs. Barokas?
Yes.
Dr. Osman?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Pomari?
Yes. I need a motion for approval of the minutes, the closed session meeting, June 26, 2024, and the official board meeting, June 26, 2024, business meeting.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mrs. Gardella?
Yes.
Mr. McCarron?
Yes.
Mrs. Barokas?
Yes.
Dr. Osman?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Pomari?
Yes. I need a motion for approval of the bill list.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mrs. Gardella?
Yes.
Mr. McCarron?
Yes.
Mrs. Barokas?
Yes.
Dr. Osman?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Cass? Mr. Pomari?
Yes. I need a motion for approval of Treasurers and Board Secretaries' reports.
Motion.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mrs. Gardella?
Yes.
Mr. McCarron?
Yes.
Mrs. Barokas?
Yes.
Dr. Osman?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Cass? Mr. Pomari?
Yes. I need a motion to open a public forum on agenda items only. We will hold another public forum in this meeting for any topic. This public forum will be for questions on the agenda only.
Motion.
Second.
Please sign in and state your name and whether or not you are a Jackson resident. Each person is allowed a maximum of five minutes to speak. No person may speak more than once on the topic until all others have been heard. This is gonna be on agenda items only.
You probably, you want the next one?
Any topic will be next. This is agenda items only, what we just approved.
Oh, save it for that. It's something more related to places.
See, no one come forward. I need a motion to close public forum.
Motion.
All in favor? Aye. I need a motion to move finance.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Gardella?
No to finance number four and yes to everything else.
Mr. McCarron?
I'll be voting no to finance number four and yes to everything else.
Mrs. Barokas?
I'll be voting no to item number four and yes to everything else.
Dr. Osman?
No to item number four, yes to everything else.
Mrs. Rivera?
No to number four, yes to everything else.
Mrs. Cass?
No to number four, yes to everything else.
Mr. Pomari?
Just to be clear, finance number four for everyone here tonight is the budget and the 9.9% tax increase. As you can see, your board has voted unanimously no. I vote no number four and yes to everything else.
I would like to inform the board that I will have to take this under due consideration and report back to the board sometime probably within the next 48 hours.
I need a motion to move facilities.
Motion.
Mrs. Gardella?
Yes.
Mr. McCarron?
Yes.
Mrs. Barokas?
Yes.
Dr. Osman?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Cass? Mr. Pomari?
I need a motion to move programs.
Motion.
Yes, I have a question regarding item number seven. The Board of Education approves the mission of a language instruction educational program, which states throughout it that class size impacts the learning of all students and our, you know, if the budget does move forward, the class sizes for our local education agency will be 30 to 40 students. Is that a concern for that application?
Number seven?
Uh, yeah. Unless it changed on a-
Page five, right?
Program number seven?
Yep. Okay, I just wanted to check, make sure.
Okay. Number seven.
Okay, so you're asking will class size have an issue on that plan?
Yeah, on that application, the state, application states from the state that class size significantly impacts the students that we're giving this program to. So, I'm asking, are we concerned with putting this forward now, not knowing, Ms. Morris, you know what I'm saying? Like, we, our class size is gonna be 30 to 40.
Well, of course, we have concern. Absolutely, yes.
It's hypocritical.
Say it again?
I said that application and our discussion today is hypocritical.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mrs. Gardella?
Yes.
Mr. McCarron?
Yes.
Mrs. Barokas?
Yes.
Dr. Osman?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
I need a motion to move students, I'm sorry.
Motion.
Discussion. So, I do have a question with both students and next personnel. A lot of this is tied to the budget passing. If we're gonna transfer all these teachers, if we're gonna move all these Rosenhour students, we voted no to this budget. Ms. Morris is gonna take additional time to review her stance on this budget. How can we vote for students and personnel tonight if we're not sure if Ms. Morris is going to veto our facilities, our finance vote? How can we confidently vote on this? Because it might change if Ms. Morris agrees with us on finance.
I mean, that's a good question to direct to Ms. Morris, obviously. Currently, the board does not have a budget for next year because you unanimously voted it down. So, you raise an excellent point about how we can vote for all the resolutions that follow at this point, given the lack of a budget.
So, at this point legally, what do we do? Ms. Morris, where are we to go with this, Ms. Morris? You haven't made a decision on finance. The board voted down this budget. We're going into no budget for the school year of '24-'25. I don't feel confident as your board president to vote for students and allow it to be voted and staff when we notify staff of the transfer, but we're not sure now if they're gonna be transferred and if these students are not gonna be in Rosenhour because it's all tied to it.
I don't see why you cannot approve the recommendation from your superintendent based on contingent upon the decision of the budget.
The budget, the contingent on the budget failing?
Contingent on the outcome of the budget, yes.
Well, the outcome of the budget currently is it's failed, correct? I mean, you didn't overrule it.
Either way, you could state it the other way. You could put it on my, whatever it is, contingent upon my decision, if you want to restate it a different way, whatever. I mean, you can't, you can't, I don't think you could take the, a chance of laying it to August to make all those decisions if it's-
I'd like to defer to council. Should we vote? Should we abstain?
You know, maybe we need to have another discussion in closed session under attorney-client privilege, given the predicament that we're in right now. So, my recommendation is let's go into closed session for about 15 minutes under attorney-client privilege and discuss our legal options. Yeah.
I need a motion to go into a 15-minute attorney-client privilege exec session, please.
Motion.
All in favor? We'll be back in 15 minutes.
I know it's our anniversary dinner. I'll be there a couple minutes. I'll text you when I'm in the car. Bye, Mom. See you later.
Don't text and drive.
I know. I'm sorry. I didn't see you.
You didn't stop.
I know, but my girlfriend, she's mad at me. I had to text her.
My boyfriend stays at school.
He's only seven.
I know, but I was looking down at my phone. I can't stop. I'm sorry.
Hey, everybody. This is Dr. Adam Christman, and this is my buddy Buster. Do you love animals? Looking to start an exciting career? In just three months, you can become a veterinary assistant. Ocean County College's Department of Continuing and Professional Education can put you on the fast track to specialized career training. Veterinary assistants are an integral part on your animal healthcare team. Working under the supervision of a veterinarian or a vet technician, you'll give assistance to the animals they treat. Through classroom and clinical instruction, OCC's veterinary assistant program covers animal nursing, pharmacy, radiology and laboratory procedures, surgical and recovery room assistance, emergency response, and much more. Graduates receive an Ocean County College Certificate of Completion and are eligible to sit for the National Veterinary Assistant Exam. For information or to register, call Continuing and Professional Education at 732-255-0409. My friend Buster and I hope to see you at Ocean County College. Join me, Terry Bradshaw, as I explore all that's new and exciting about the USA and Canada, and what people are doing in order to make a difference. It's an easy way to see what's happening across your own country. Welcome to Today in America. The Northeast has played a dominant role in American history and continues to be a major powerhouse today. Join me as we journey to one destination among the original 13 colonies. Situated by halfway between New York City and Philadelphia, Jackson Township, New Jersey, is one of America's best places to live, work, and to play. Established in 1844, the town was named after President Andrew Jackson. Its primary economic driver at the time was agriculture, and while some farms still exist, Jackson Township has transitioned from a rural to a developing community. Its population has more than doubled since 1980, and today, Jackson Township is home to around 58,000 residents. Known by many as the gateway to the Jersey Shore, it's the largest township in Ocean County and the third-largest in the state. It spans over 100 square miles, 8,500 acres of which are considered developable land. All of this room-to-grow makes Jackson Township a place flourishing with development opportunity. And that's exactly what township leaders and others in the community are working to achieve.
The collaborative effort goes back to our working with the New Jersey State Department of Community Affairs, along with the New Jersey Institute of Technology, College of Architecture, who helped us design and market this strategic plan so we can attract new businesses, actually, people to come to Jackson for, you know, not only careers, but to live and work here.
With the substantial increase in population, Jackson Township leaders say their residents could use more big business in town, providing the services residents now have to seek outside of town. Jackson Township leaders also say they would like to increase development to provide local employment opportunities and to shift the ratable base from residential to commercial. The township's strong population and its already huge attractor, Six Flags Great Adventure, are working in its favor. One of the first pieces to the township's master plan is the development of a lodging and entertainment venue. The Department of Community Affairs and the New Jersey Institute of Technology, College of Architecture, and Design are key parts of the project.
Right now, all that Jackson Township needs is a hotel developer to come in, seize this opportunity. The New Jersey Business Action Center is poised to develop a package of incentives for a developer that comes to the state, so we're optimistically looking forward to seeing this development become a reality.
The lodging facility will be the first of its kind at any Six Flags property.
We're very excited about having a lodging and entertainment complex at Six Flags Great Adventure. The reason being is currently almost all of our guests, when they come to visit the park, can't stay because there isn't much accommodation in the area. And so, this is actually going to give us the opportunity for them to enjoy the entire complex, both the water park and the theme park on a visit, extend the weekend, or come actually down and spend their vacations here. We're actually looking forward to that.
In addition to the opportunities for commercial development, Jackson Township's residential sector has room to accommodate an additional 5,600 housing units. Mitch Lee of Lee Realty has plans to build 1,500.
Mitch Lee's been working very closely with the mayor and the Township of Jackson to design a vision, a vision of a dream village, a place where people can work, live, play, have fun.
These current and future development plans are designed to make the quality of life for Jackson residents that much greater. The township already boasts year-round recreational opportunities, including two golf courses, campground resorts, and 10 playgrounds and park facilities. It features an excellent public school system with a nationally-recognized high school band, a low-crime rate, premium outlet shopping, and nearby access to top-notch healthcare facilities.
Now is probably the most exciting time in Jackson's history, with everything we have to offer to families, businesses looking to relocate or start a new business, a premier destination now for vacations. Families are going to love it here, live, work, and play. I couldn't think of a better place.
You have the power to save a life. Cardiac arrest isn't rare, but surviving it is. Over 300,000 people suffer from sudden cardiac arrest every year. About 8% survive, and it's not only the elderly that can experience these life-altering events. The number-one killer of young athletes is sudden cardiac arrest, because a young athlete dies from cardiac incident once every three days in the United States. About 80% of cardiac arrests that occur are outside of a hospital. About 89% of those victims don't survive because people around them don't know how to perform cardiopulmonary resuscitation. It's very simple. You can help save a life. The American Heart Association changed its protocol for the public to hands-only CPR, which means when a witness cardiac arrest occurs, a bystander like you can call 911 and begin external chest compressions immediately by pushing hard and fast in the center of the chest while awaiting arrival of the first responders. It's very straightforward. Your immediate action can help save a life. Learn hands-only CPR.
Hello, I'm Hunter Foster. I'm at Jackson Memorial High School, and we just gave a masterclass for The Incredible Clue, which they are performing here at the school, and it's going to be November 16th, 17th, and 18th. Come check it out. You're not going to be disappointed. These actors are great. You're going to have a lot of fun. It's really funny. Come see Clue.
Stay back! Stay back! Help! Somebody help!
Meeting is back in order. Mr. Boginsky, can you please roll call?
Mrs. Gardella?
Present.
Mr. McCarron?
Present.
Mrs. Barokas?
Present.
Dr. Osmond?
Present.
Mrs. Rivera?
Present.
Mrs. Cass?
Present.
Mr. Polmeri?
Present. Okay, so we feel confident that we can move forward with students. However, with the uncertainty of the budget, Ms. Permili has decided, and she will speak on this, to administratively remove personnel from this agenda. We will have a special meeting next Wednesday at 5:00 PM here in Memorial at the auditorium to address personnel once we get the conclusion of what's happening with finance. So, Ms. Permili?
Okay, thank you. So, I am administratively removing the personnel items from tonight's agenda as Mr. Polmeri just described. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Permili. So, once again, we can move forward with the vote for students. Finance may have to be slightly revisited next week as well, depending on what Ms. Morris decides. I need a motion to move students.
Motion.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mrs. Gardella?
Yes.
Mr. McCarron?
Yes.
Mrs. Barokas?
Yes.
Dr. Osmond?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Polmeri?
Yes. I need a motion to open public forum on any topic pertaining to the Board of Education.
Motion.
Second.
Please sign in and state your name and whether or not you are a Jackson resident. Each person is allowed a maximum of five minutes to speak. No person may speak more than once on the topic until all others have been heard.
Isaac Elsner, Jackson resident, still. Was not expecting to basically be in limbo about the results of the vote, but really, the only concern now is that you're just going to be voting on students, even though we still do not know if Rosenhour is closing, because effectively, it's just in limbo now. It's open or closed. It could be either. I don't know. By probably like the next 48 hours, we'll see. I don't know why you're going to move ahead with voting for students and effectively moving them to Crawford. If she does say no, and we don't have a budget, Rosenhour is still there, so it's effectively closed, but not. So, I don't know the logic behind voting for students and not staff if we have no idea what's going on. Yeah, that's mostly it. More confusion on why students first? That? Why? Thanks?
Hi, Erin Mathodakis, 88, Thompson Bridge, resident of Jackson. My question is to the attorney, where you're stating that a meeting will be held next Wednesday. Excuse me. The Board of Education doesn't operate under the Sunshine Law, where notice has to be posted 10 days prior to the meeting, and without a 48-hour, with the 48-hour ruling from the state monitor, that puts us past that Wednesday date.
This, if I'm understanding your question correctly, the Board is subject to the Open Public Meetings Act. The Board has to advertise a special meeting, which this would be 48 hours in advance of the meeting next Wednesday. So, we believe we have sufficient time to advertise a meeting for next Wednesday.
But isn't the requirement for advertisement 10 days prior?
No, it's 48 hours.
Okay. That's all my question.
Okay.
Hi, Kathy D. Gregorio, Jackson resident. I had two questions, I'm not sure for the Board, or also for Ms. Morris. Ms. Morris mentioned about the, this being a revenue problem with being us not paying our fair share. So, my question is, has the state given specific numbers of what dollar amount per 100 assessed for a town citizen anywhere in the state of New Jersey that is considered their fair share in order to meet those budgets? Like, if we're not doing enough, then has the state said, whoa, this is what you should be doing? And my other question is, if we are relying on money from the sale of Rosenhour to make our budgetary needs, that we have this dollar amount in mind, wouldn't buyers, knowing that we are desperate for this dollar amount, treat this like fire sale and we're, we'll give you this number of dollar? Like, I didn't know how that actually worked, or how that, what amount we were selling it for, how that number came about, and then what happens if we don't get it? Thank you.
Kathy Tapiero, Jackson resident. Just a quick question is, how will the public be informed of Ms. Morris's decision? And what happens if the budget doesn't go forward? What is the next step for the district? Because I believe the superintendent said we can't operate without a budget. And then, the last thing is just, in all of this, as it moves forward with the state and with whatever decision Ms. Morris makes and whatever comes after that, I would just like everyone to remember that the kids need stability at some point. This has to end at some point, whether that's the kids who are moving from Rosenhour and making a new home at Crawford, or it's the band that's practicing twice a week right now based on faith, or it's sports team that's elected captains not knowing if they're going to be able to go to games. At some point, for the kids' sake, whatever process is happening has to stop, and the kids need stability for this coming year and hopefully the years after that. Thank you.
Deb Jones, Jackson. I would like to thank you for not placing your vote yet, and it's my sincere hope that over the next 48 hours, you really can dig deep into your heart and put yourselves in the position that we're in and see how we feel. But I do want to, I know I come up here and I say things that I have to say, but I also think that I also need to say thank you.
Seeing no one come forward, I need a motion to close the public forum.
Motion.
All in favor? This time, I'll turn it over to Ms. Permili. I know there were some great questions. I'm sure she could shed some light on some of them.
Thank you, Mr. Polmeri. I'll start with a question about voting on students. So, it's the actual items on the agenda that is taking place for vote, none of which is related to anything that having to do with the students at Rosenhour. There are other items there about placement for students at District, going on trips, trip approvals there, so there's nothing that would take effect based on the budget vote for that. So we want to make sure that those students still have the opportunity to do those things.
No, no. Rosenhour students are not postponed. That movement is still...
That's still happening, yes. In regards to the local fair share, and does that calculate? That is part of the very convoluted formula that I don't know is absolutely easy to figure out. So, Mr. Boginski, do you want to share a little bit more detail about that?
So the two big numbers are the equalized valuation of the properties in town, and the other one is the income of the residents in town. So those are the two big metrics that the state utilizes, nothing of which has anything to do with what we do here at the school district. So when Ms. Morris mentions the local fair share, that's what they're talking about.
So the questions in regards to the selling of Rosenhour and the dollar number, so we obviously needed to make some very quick decisions about what to assess that at. We haven't, as Mr. Boginski mentioned earlier, we have not done a formal assessment. You need time to do that. Appraisal, thank you, appraisal to do that. So we will go through that process, but for now, in the budget, is the $7 million price tag for that based on a quick search of what we've seen some elementary schools go for, as well as what we felt would be a semi-realistic number. But again, not an expert in that area, but looking to be able to close the gap in the budget. What happens if we don't get that? Well, as I said earlier, there's no indication that we'll be able to even sell it that quickly. We're going to run into a deficit. We're going to run into the red during the school year, and that's what we have been articulating to our county offices and to the Department of Education, that it's not a good plan. We know it's not a good plan, but in order to close an $18 million gap, that's the choice that we needed to make. The next steps in regards to hearing the final decision of Ms. Morris is, as we do for everything that happens related to the budget, we will email out to our families and our community about her decision, and we will also be informing the community of the special meeting. So that will be communicated. Just want to make sure I don't miss anything. I think I got everything.
Thank you, Ms. Permili. We will now go to board comments, starting with Mr. McCarron.
Just want to thank everybody for coming out tonight, and I just wanted to thank our administrative team for all your hard work that you're putting into making all these last-minute changes. Thank you.
Thanks for coming out. Obviously, it's a frustrating situation. We're trying to do the best that we can. We'll keep fighting for you. You know, it possibly could be a good sign that we didn't get overturned immediately, so let's see what happens.
I thank everyone for coming out and viewing our meeting livestream. I want to thank you, everyone, for your input and comments. We should not be closing any school buildings when we have 30 classrooms and trailers. This should be considered and rectified. Everyone have a safe and wonderful evening.
I wanted to also thank the residents and our administrative team for doing a nice job of articulating the needs of Jackson, and I appreciate Ms. Morris taking a little extra time to consider what you heard tonight, and hopefully, together, we can all come up with a game plan for Jackson moving forward that's a little more stable and allows us to make less hasty decisions that benefit our students. And that's really the game plan, is the students, and thank you for recognizing that, and thank you again for everybody coming out tonight.
Thank you for everyone who came out tonight. Thank you to those that are watching on TV. Thank you to our administration for working tirelessly for our children, for working so many hours over and beyond their normal time to work on this, and thank you, Ms. Morris, for taking some more time to make a final decision for the Jackson School District and our children. Have a good night, everyone.
I just want to echo everyone else's sentiments, just, of course, thanking our administrative team and Mrs. Morris for really hearing all of our comments. I know you have a tough decision, as do we, and I guess we'll be back here next Wednesday. Thank you.
I'd like to thank our residents. Your advocating is being heard. I'd like to thank Ms. Permili and the entire administrative staff. I'd like to thank our teachers and everyone working in our schools. I know this has been a frustrating time, but we're going to continue to advocate. We're going to continue to make sure that our students get the education that they deserve, that they've always had here in Jackson. I want to thank this board. You guys pull me up when I'm down, and you keep me front and center, so thank you. And I want to thank Ms. Morris, because I think you take in this time to think about this. I know you were a superintendent and an educator for most of your life, and I know you know what's right, and I know you're in a hard spot, you wear many hats, and I know what you see here, you understand the need, and I hope that you take this time to go back, as you said, to the Department of Ed and say, "Hey, we can't do this to Jackson. This is too great of a town to do this to." And I hope for some positive resolutions to this by next Wednesday. So once again, to everybody, thank you, and have a great night. I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
By acclamation. Aye.